Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
You'll bow your heads with them. I do heavenly Father, we thank you for the diversity, the talents, and the willingness of our citizens in this town to help us make this a better place. Leading guide this council, all this we ask in the heavenly precious name. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keeling, a roll please.
Terry Hyde, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tomesmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lucy McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lauren Root, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you Connie. First order of business is the approval of our January 2nd meeting minutes. Council, you've had these well in advance tonight. Chair will entertain any additions, edits, corrections, or motions.
Didn't see any corrections or additions, may I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion of second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, why don't you get us started out with our, I guess you're gonna introduce our auditor, or why don't we do it, just give them-
The man who needs no introduction.
There he is.
Okay, the four minutes has started, correct? Okay. I appreciate you having me up here, we're gonna try to keep it brief. If you have questions, please ask, and I can ramble on all night long, but I don't think we're gonna do that.
We've experienced that before.
First off, most cities always ask, we did have issue what you call an unqualified report. That means we found nothing seriously wrong with any of the financial statements, so it's an unqualified report for again. And plus also, next one, the city did receive for the June 30th, I'm always working in the past, and the city received for the June 30th, 2012 governmental finance officer certificate of excellence in financial reporting. It is very few, I think of, I think it's only something like 8% of the cities and counties, local governments nationwide apply for it, and of all those, something like 45% of them actually receive it. Y'all been getting it now for, I think probably 28 of the last 30 years, something like that. Very long record. The next sheet, the change, net position, net position is entity-wide. Entity-wide, you're talking about the city of Cartersville has the general fund, it has water sewer fund, electric fund, gas fund, all these other little funds, the SPOLOST funds, this is entity-wide, the city of Cartersville. And it's on page 104 if you got the financial statements out in front of you. But these funds are all combined, and you'll find on page 104, the general fund, water sewer, gas, electric, and they combined to come up with a, page, the next one, yeah, there it is. The cash balance for the general fund decreased $2,543,000. You say, you know, that's sort of bad, but not necessarily. The general fund's not gonna retire. You still got a million $462,000 in the general fund operating account at this moment. So you use the money, you budget for it, use the upcoming money in July, August for the money you collect, so there's nothing wrong with having a decrease in cash. A lot of people worry about it, so I wouldn't worry about it as long as you're following what you planned on doing, which if you'll see on the next sheet, which is your revenues and expenditures. So you'd planned on collecting $33 million in revenue, and compared to, boy, my glasses, was talking about these progressive glasses, they're getting in more. 2012, June 30th, 2012, you collected 34 million. June 30th, 2013, 33 million, a decrease of 882,000. And then your expenditures, total expenditures in 2012 was 40 million, 2013, 38 million. Your expenditures decreased, but the reason you had this deficit decrease in cash is still your expenditures were more than your revenues. And that'll happen, you know, you've got excess cash, so you budget to spend it in the current year. Here again, like I said, the city of Cartersville's not gonna retire, you've been around for, it's in your financial statement since 18, you know, been around a lot longer than any of us have. You did transfer in from proprietary funds, and that's the reason you have the water sewer, electric and gas, is to keep your property taxes down, so you transferred in from these other funds for a million $500,000. That helps to keep your property taxes lower and help run the general fund. Statement of net position, these are your enterprise funds, this will tie into page 28 on your audit report. The water sewer, electric and gases on this spreadsheet, you can see how you did 2013 to 2012. Total current assets in the water fund, 17 million compared to 2012, 18 million, decreased to 942,000. That, you know, a lot of that decrease is because of accumulated depreciation, which is a, an expense, but not a use of cash, so, you know, really, you stayed very close to where you were in 2012, 2013. Electric fund, there was a huge decrease in that, a lot of that was a change in the funds that were coming in from other funds, they were, these are receivables, they were paid down, therefore your asset decreased. The gas fund, you went from total assets of $3,530,000 to $5,745,000, an increase of $2,215,000 mainly in cash. Your cash within the gas fund increased $1,860,000. Next page. Page 29 of the financial, of the audit report, these are your liabilities, and I'm just gonna hit the bottom sections that are highlighted on here. Total net assets between all funds, if you take your assets minus your liabilities, the water and sewer, net of all that, actually increased 404,000. So if you're looking at your own personal assets, you take your assets minus what you owe, and you increase, you're better off. So the water and sewer fund is better off, 404,000. The electric fund is 383, net-wise, worse in 2013 than it was in 2012. Gas fund, net-wise, is better off, a million 440,000. So enterprise-wise, your major enterprises, net, you increased your position, excess of about a million and a half dollars from 2012 to 2013. Revenues and expenditures, you'll see in the, this will be on page 31 of the audit report. Total operating revenues increase in the water and sewer fund, 312,000. Yeah. That's in the water and sewer fund. Electric fund increased total revenues, 247,000. Gas fund increased to a million 896,000 in total revenues. Your cost of electricity, there was a big jump in cost of electricity from '12 to '13, which resulted in your revenues in the electric fund actually going down. So, and that'll happen from year to year, there's an increase and you don't pass it on, you elect not to pass it on, items like that. Overall, the net income within the water and sewer increased 212,000 from '12 to '13. There was a decrease in net income in the electric of a million three, an increase in gas revenue of a million seven from 2012 to 2013. Capital projects fund on page 24, this tie into your financial report, received the SPOLOST, this mainly the SPOLOST, received 4 million 361,000 compared to prior year, 4 million 8,000. SPOLOST is usually a good indicator of people buying, so you'll notice it looks like more people are buying from 2012 to 2013, 'cause you get SPOLOST based on sales tax. You spent 12 million, you say, well, if I collected only 4 million, how can I spend 12 million? Your SPOLOST funds come in and come in, you'll spend a little every year, but it's accumulating and it's growing, and then all of a sudden you get the project, you get everything lined up, and you'll have a lot of the money coming out. But for the most part, you're, there's no issues with your spending, your SPOLOST money for what you designated and was voted on. The, page 27 is the budget compared to actual, there was no departments that exceeded budgets, so there was no little comments on there, so y'all watch the budget fairly close. The retirement fund, this on page 34 of the financial statements, the retirement fund has 32 million 38,000, an increase of 3 million 889,000. Now, this is just like any other retirement fund, if you're in it, in a 401K or anything, this, a lot of that increase, the city is funding it, but a lot of the increase depends on the market, what it's invested on. As the market goes up, your funded percentage goes up. So luckily, the market is, has been going up. Of that increase, a million 568,000 was interest and dividends earned, and prior year had a decrease of a million 143,000. Let's see, next page. Employee retirement funding, here's what you're looking at. In 2013, asset value is 29 million, liability's 32, unfunded 2 million. So you can see that, you're getting a lot better at the asset value compared to the liability. And that is a lot better than a lot of other cities. I've seen some cities down into 60, so.
Do we wanna be at 100%?
It's gonna be very hard to get it 100%. Years ago, I used to see some at 100, 101, 104. It depends on the market. If the market soars, it's gonna, 'cause you're putting money in there every month, so that increases, but you've also got money coming out every month, people retired.
If you got 200, you could do plan enhancements at no cost.
So, so they, there's an actuarial study, and the information is all in the audit report, pulled from that actuarial report, and you'll see the funding progress. You're putting in exactly what the actuarials study says for you to put in, so you're putting it in based on what they think is gonna happen. If it happens, you increase your net assets. If it doesn't happen because of the market, it could go down, but it should recover. The main thing is, don't pay too much attention to that funded/unfunded, as long as you're putting in what you're supposed to. And it's just like I tell my son and my daughter, put it into your 401K, ignore the report, look at it maybe once or twice a year, put it in every month, put it in every month or every week. And then as you get older, change the structure of it. The only, was talking earlier, and it's not true that we look until we find something, we look at a lot of different aspects of the city's financials and a lot of different records, and there was one little issue we found, it has been basically changed, and that's on our comment on, and a copy of it is in here, it has to do with the way the compensated absences were being paid out, you know, if you're paying it out of the general fund, or you're paying it out of, what was the other fund?
Pension fund.
Pension fund. You do one or the other, but not, so it's being done both ways, you know, so you do one or the other, so now I think you're gonna put it all back on the city paying the compensation that somebody leaves.
I think in fact they took action a couple meetings ago to do that.
Yeah, so this has already been basically cleared up, and I think it was just a matter of, you know, you've got a lot of people coming in and leaving, and a lot of people approving, and they get approved and go through and get paid one way, and it should've gone the other way. So, I think I have gone over my four minutes, but if you've got any questions, I think if I'm not mistaken, if you've got any emails, you can tell Tom. The best person, if you've got any questions, the audit report is, read or beware, if you don't know what you're reading, if you aren't used to it, go to Tom, who looks at the detail which you're looking at, that every month, every meeting, and very few adjustments, so what he's giving you, you can rely on, unlike some local governments we have, what they're looking at, making decisions on, shouldn't be, decisions shouldn't be made on those reports, but you can rely on the reports you're getting from them, so. But if you have any questions, you email me, email Tom, he'll forward them to me, we'll be glad to get back with you.
I have a question, it's like me related to the city. This is a city plan, city plan, pension plan. How does that differ from your 401K? At least what I'm asking is, a lot of people are having to buy their own 401K.
Real simply, that is more or less guaranteed. A 401K will fluctuate with the market, and you're completely at risk on it. This, the employee has very low, very low risk.
This is a defined benefit, I mean, the employee is given a defined, definite, no FNs or buts. If you follow and stay here 30 years, rule of 85, combination of age, term of service, you're gonna get X amount of, this is gonna be your monthly premium from then until you die. A 401K, when you leave, you take whatever's in there, and that's it. And you could spend it all right now, be gone in a year, I mean, it's up to you, so.
It's probably like what you got when you retired from Lockheed.
Exactly.
They don't have that anymore, do they? Why, that's, that's what, that's what that means.
When my father retired from Lockheed, it was set and granted. This is, he might got a 1% or 2% increase maybe, but it was the same monthly payment, wham bam bam, that was it, you know. So if you had a choice, I don't know which is better. It depends on how good you are at putting away.
Depends on the market's doing, yeah. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
And thank you, Tom, too.
All right, we got a couple of first reading of ordinances. Chief Carter, you've got the first one?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The request for this revision is in chapter nine, which is the Fire Prevention and Protection section of our codes. In this particular ordinance revision that we're requesting here will provide a standard system for hydrant color coding identification, and to establish a practice in ordinance as far as our maintenance and flowing of the fire hydrants within the city of Cartersville. All of this, that's within this ordinance is in compliance with American Water Works and also NFPA 921. This ordinance change provides for several benefits, key benefits to highlight on, one of which would be, the flowing of the water enhances the quality of the water within the system, reducing the tuberculosis within the system, so that's a good point. Primarily also, it's gonna assist firefighters, it's gonna enhance the firefighter's safety because technically, based on these color codes, as they see these fire hydrants and they're coming into a scene, they will know basically just on sight what the GPM flow of that fire hydrant was at the time of the test. So that aids in the tactical decisions they would make. The other big side benefit to this is also, this is part of our plan as far as enhancing ISO rating within the city. This is one of the things that ISO under the new rating schedule has requested, that we will gain additional points for that we did not receive back in 2006. This ordinance has been put together through city legal and also cooperative effort with the city of Cartersville Water Department and their efforts, and that's pretty much it.
Okay, any questions for Chief on this?
Where'd we get one of those things like you got on the arm there?
I can hook you up.
Now Chief, when, if a fireman had to pull up to a hydrant, and there it is, orange and yellow, and, so they know the flow then, and then approximately how many months before that would have, would that color have been determined, approximately?
It'd be within, well, it all depends upon the last time it was flowed. Currently, right now, the new ISO schedule, all fire hydrants are now flowed once every five years at a minimum. So we know that, the approximate range of that. And they stay fairly, they stay fairly standard, you know, unless there's a significant change within the infrastructure of the water system itself, demand changes or whatever, but it puts them in a good approximate area. It's a whole lot better than not knowing, because if, if you, you pull up to a hydrant and you've got a choice between a good one and a bad one, but you can't really tell because of color, you can't pull the books out, you just don't have time, it's, it's really a big improvement.
Any other questions for Chief Carter on this item? Since it is an ordinance, we require two readings, we'll take this up at our next meeting. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Marshall Hathaway has the next item.
Mayor and Council. This is also another change to chapter nine of the Fire Prevention and Protection Code, 927, deals specifically with the Fire Prevention Code, and the state of Georgia is changing to updated editions, and we typically follow the same as the state. So this revision is allowing us to automatically, every time the DCA makes a change, that we're gonna make that same change.
Okay, any questions on this item? And again, thank you. This is a first reading of an ordinance, and we'll take it up for consideration at our next council meeting. Thank you. Mr. Sanders, you have the next item?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple of months ago, you voted to abandon, abandon an unopened alley that's adjacent to Porter Street, and this is a follow-up action to allow the mayor to sign the quit claim deed so that the property owner can clean up their title on their property. We recommend approval.
Okay, any questions or comments on this item? If there are none, a motion would be in order.
Sanders.
Second.
Got a motion of second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, who do we got here? Tara.
Mayor and Council, Cartersville has been a member of the Georgia Main Street program since 1987, and to remain in good standing with that, it is requested that the Downtown Development Authority and City Council do go into a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Community Affairs. The current MOU would be for this calendar year, 2014, it would expire December 31st of 2014, and the DDA Board does recommend your approval.
Okay, any questions from his courier on this item? And if there are none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is an amendment to a contract that we are in with Georgia Department of Natural Resources. A couple of months ago, you approved an additional, to accept additional money for our grant, and what this amendment does, this increases, this adds a year to our, to our timeline before the project is due. It was due to be completed December 31st, 2013, and this extension amendment gives us to December the 31st, 2014. I recommend approval.
Questions for Greg on this item? And if there are none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Greg. Mr. Jones, you've got the next two, please.
Good evening, everyone. Up first, we have a recommendation for your consideration to enter into a contract with the Department of Natural Resources Drinking Water Program. We have done this contract annually for several years, it's $9,200 to be paid from budget. Essentially, what we get out of this is we get below-market rates on testing that allows us to comply with our permits. It is done by the agency essentially that regulates us, so they typically agree with their results, and we have no issues with them, so it's a pretty beneficial relationship with them.
Do we have all the e-verify and e-safe documentation on that?
I am told that they are, have exempted themselves from such regulation, and that we have no need to worry about.
Why would I ask that question?
You know there are no aliens in St. Louis.
Right.
Okay.
Bob, has this amount stayed pretty consistent?
It has, it's, and I didn't have the table in your packet, but essentially what you do is you look up your population served, read over, and that's what you pay. It's a set amount, and it has been stable for, I know, the last two years.
Okay, any questions for Bob on this item? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion of second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Bob.
All right, next item up is a restock for our distribution and collection system. We try to do these purchases quarterly, I explained earlier, we missed the fourth quarter purchase, so we're doubling up here, you'll typically see these land in about $20-ish thousand dollars. And essentially, this is just the various parts and pieces that we use to hold the water system together. The low bidder was Kendall Municipal at $40,194 and change, would recommend approval of that purchase, and it is a budgeted item.
Okay, any questions on this item? And if there are none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Bob? Mr. Reinhardt?
Honorable Mayor and Council, the gas department has a 2001 BICO that was in need of a main boom being replaced. The garage agreed to carry on the work, and the work hasn't been done on it. The cost of the main boom from Franklin Tractor was $6,988 and a penny. Due to the need of a piece of equipment, the authorization was gone ahead and given to the garage to be done. I recommend approval of the purchase of the main boom from Franklin Tractor for $6,988 and one penny. All e-verify and safe forms are on file.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If there's no discussion, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The financial report, please.
Yes, Mr. Honorable Mayor and Council, tonight we'll be looking at the November 2013 and comparing it to November 2012. In the general fund, revenues have increased over last year by $568,000. While the expenses have increased by $355,000, the increase in expenses is due to increased personnel costs, increased operating, and increased operating expenses. The three areas of revenues that I look at, local option sales tax, we have a decrease from last year of $203,000. Police fines on forfeitures, we have a decrease from last year from $68,000, $63,000. And billing permits and inspection fees, we have an increase of about $7,600. In the water and sewer, water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last year by about $12,000. Expenses decreased by $46,000. This decrease is due mainly to decreased capital expenditures. In the gas fund, revenues have increased from last year by $652,000. Expenses have increased by $1.4 million. This increase is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased purchase of gas, along with capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues have increased from last year by $70,000. Expenses increased $278,000. This is, this increase is due to increased personnel expenses and cost of purchase of electricity. In the stormwater fund, revenues increased from last year by $59,000. Expenses decreased by $266,000. This decrease is due to decreased, I'm sorry, it's a combination of increased personnel expenses and operating expenses coupled with a decrease in capital expenditures. Remember, last year, we were doing the mitigation grant that was quite expensive for us. And in the solid waste fund, revenues increased from last year by $20,000. Expenses decreased by $59,000. This is due mainly to decreased operating expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased from last year by $51,000, and expenses have decreased by $34,000. This decrease is mainly due to decreased operating expenses and decreased capital expenses. And that is my financial report for the evening.
Okay, any questions on the financial report? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else need to come for council this evening?
Mayor, just an announcement this weekend, and Monday, City Hall will be closed, our city offices will be closed, county also, in commemoration of Martin Luther King Day. On Sunday night, our own Louis Tomesmire will be the speaker at Mount Zion, and we wanted to announce that with, I'm being proud of him.
Thank you.
I am too. Well said. Anything else by anybody? Anything else by anybody?
Go Seattle.
Go Seattle? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Or adjourn, did not get a hirumph out of you or either.